Here. Commissioner Rock is absent for the moment. Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Milphy.
Here.
Commissioner Park.
Here.
And new returning Commissioner Bobson.
Here.
Welcome back.
All right, have a quorum and just for Dave and Dana online, we have our Samuel is here with us. You probably see him on the screen, but he's here with us as our new returning commissioner. Welcome him here. Welcome back and all right, Meredith, we verify that all notices have been done correctly. Okay, great. And I want to remind the commissioners, if you've had any ex parte communication or conflicts of interest with any of the applicants, please let us know at that time. And all right, go to the first item. I don't believe we had the minutes.
Vacation, got promoted, so I had a rather busy month.
Vacation promoted in a conference, if I remember right, so we will not have the minutes on this meeting. All right, we'll move to the preliminary development plan reviews. You have a pre-application 2409 design review, to be determined Kron. We have Nelson's Industrial Construction Engineering. Sure who we have for that?
Karen, I'm sorry, I missed roll call, Liz Rock is here.
Oh, Liz, all right, great. Who, do we have someone here for Nelson Industrial Construction? Kron Lane? Are you online? If you're online, you may need to hit unmute yourself to hit star six. Anybody here?
Checked in, confirming attendance last week, so maybe their time zone update got messed up or something. And I'll keep an eye out.
Let's keep an eye out for that one. All right, then we'll move to our next pre-app. Pre-app 2408, to be determined Wolf Pack Place with the St. Luke's Foundation. And Steve? Steve's online. I think of, um, we move that over off the side because it's going to be right in front. I just realized that's going to be right in front of the camera. And if you can give your name and address for the record.
120 miles of road, McCall. I am here in my role as the chair of the Hospital District Board. And the hospital district in conjunction with the St. Luke's McCall Foundation has identified a definite need to try to augment medical care in the community as best we can. And identified a crying need for workforce housing. And presently, there are 30 unfilled positions at the hospital that have been unfilled for more than 90 days. And the average length of time to fill a position is 132 days. So we thought we would try to combine forces and see if we could do something to alleviate the workforce housing issue. And versus competing in the market for appropriate property that then would take it off the table for somebody else. We thought it would be worth trying to create our own project. To that end, in a timely manner, the school district was offering 4.8 acres of a site on Mission Street. And the foundation was generous enough to purchase that property. And so we're here today to present our preliminary ideas for that property. With me is Verna Vanas, and Verna and I are co-chairs of a work group that represents both the foundation and the hospital district that are trying to spearhead this project. And our entitlement team is Steve Milliman, who is handling the legal and lots of the applications. Greg Tankersley of Crestline Engineer, which is doing the civil design. And Iron Town Manufacturing in Spanish Fork, Utah. We're proposing a modular project for this, and they are doing their own architecture relative to it. So you see here the site. And at the top of the site is north and the bottom of the site is south. And the north of the site is the school district workforce housing project. It's slightly off the site plan. To the east is the bike path. To the south is the McCall Cemetery. Into the west is Mission Street. And the property wraps around the Wildwood condominiums on Mission Street. So you see here, I guess first the property used to be zone civic. Received a zone change, R8. R8 allows 38 units, which is what we're proposing here. So the units will each be a mix, there'll be a mix, perhaps an even mix of two and three bedroom units. And the floor footage of living area is about 1,500. And each unit will have 500 square feet of garage or slash storage space. It would be a tandem garage where one vehicle would be behind the other. And so there's probably going to be a tendency to use the back of it for storage, since a lot of the users of this will be kind of in transition and probably have a lot of furniture and stuff with them. So this project is we're attempting to do this project. And we have an initial amount of money. But we're attempting to do this project as money becomes available. So phasing the project is going to be very important to us. Do we go just a little to the north? So we've designed with the idea, first of all, we come in off of Mission Street through an easement granted by the McCall's Downey School District. And then our attempt here has been to create a sort of a loop at the north end of the project that meets all the criteria for fire trucks. And kind of ease traffic flow. And our idea is that hopefully we can do infrastructure just in this north area of the project and not have to do infrastructure for the whole project right up front. And our goal with that is to just try to get something useful in the ground. And a bunch of infrastructure doesn't house anybody. So as much as we can work off of this initial loop, which could be hopefully two phases. In one phase, you can see the units numbered there is along the bike path and is the first eight units as fourplexes. And then the next phase is to the west toward the Wildwood condominiums, and that's another eight units. And then beyond that, I think we'd have to finish out the infrastructure as we move on south. So the units are three stories high, they're over a garage. And we played with the idea of garages by the side, garages separate. But looking at the various site plans and comparing them, we really like the idea of trying to keep as much as possible the woodsy character of the site and allow the efficient footprint, allowing keeping a lot of trees there and pathway flows through it. So hopefully, right now, it's kind of a, almost a little park. And hopefully, we'll kind of keep some of that feel with pathways through it. And possibility of even doing a little pull off from the bike path with some picnic tables and things like that. So let's see. You can see these lines here, this is phase one, this is phase two. And then we go on down with other phases. So I think that's where hopefully we get some cooperation from the city and some flexibility in being able to phase those things as money is become available. So we are here asking for, we have a planning unit development, preliminary plan, a subdivision preliminary plat, scenic group review, design review, and development agreement review. And we will be plating each of these units individually. Because as the hospital district and the foundation contribute to this, they need to keep their interests separate. So the units will be planted to the ownership that contributes to that. So if it's a fourplex and the foundation contributes three quarters of it, they get three of the units and the district gets one, et cetera. Let's see, what else? I guess any questions if you would have?
I know this is a preliminary drawing and setup. Do you plan any additional buffering between the units to the west and the Wildwood condos? Because I mean, as three stories are going to kind of stand out, so is there any additional buffering planned?
Well, I guess our buffering, we've, we met with Wildwood condominiums, some of their owners. And we're keeping their pathways through, we're trying to preserve trees, which they thought were important. And, you know, if we're going for our R8 density, the trade off of three stories to two stories is a lot more trees gone and stuff like that. So, but if we could go south just a little bit. The one place the Wildwood condominiums identified as they thought most important was right in this area here. Because at this point, the site is higher than the Wildwood condominiums. These owners expressed some trepidation. And so as part of this, we're going to have to have at least one, maybe two ADA units. And they will be not a manufactured unit, but a stick framed. The manufactured units really wouldn't work for an ADA unit. And so those will be two level. And so we've tried to take their, the area they've identified as most sensitive and have two story units in that area.
I would hope with your planners and everything, you might consider and look a little bit more on that buffering, because I could see that becoming a potential issue, maybe not, but if, it's something to consider.
Hope the staggering would help alleviate that. And the problem, we'd be happy to give more, but with a roadway and parking setback and stuff like that, we're right on losing the ability to have units either side of the road.
In your phasing, do you anticipate roughing in your road to connect over to Mission Avenue? Or would that be cut off with the phasing?
Ideally, that would be a part of the phasing. And at the point, we had to loop the water. And I guess we'll have to probably do a study at what point that would be. You know, but we were hoping to not have to put that road out until probably phase three.
I just, I wondered if fire would have any issues with their trucks and trouble.
Well, that's to be discussed, but they've got a nice loop there and, you know, that would get them to all the units that were constructed at that time. And then as soon as the units come south along a single, single road, then we would complete the road on out to Mission.
Yeah. Would you have all the engineering completed with the water and sewer systems? Because I know there's some pretty good, you know, rain there.
That would be, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all that site engineering would be done right now.
First phase, just to know that, okay.
Going back a little bit, what did you say about the city gets one third of the equity in the, in the? I didn't quite understand that.
Well, we don't, you know, the hospital district kind of gets a certain amount every year. The foundation is a little more in flux with the money they receive. So by plating the units, we can then give ownership proportional to the financial contribution
Of the hospital.
Of the district versus the foundation.
Oh, not the city.
Not, yeah. The city is involved in any of this then, right?
Pardon?
The city is involved in any of this, or?
No.
Okay.
And I guess the other thing to mention, the idea for this is that the rent people would pay here would be sort of capped at 30% of their adjusted gross income. So two people side by side with the same unit might be paying
Just promotional value.
A different amount, depending on how much they made. And so, you know, it's trying to give people housing within the parameters that, you know, like they can afford.
I think I understand it. Dave, did you have something?
Yeah, I do. So I think you answered it. So these will be owned by the foundation or the hospital and rented to employees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I appreciate you actually building workforce housing that's within the income limits of our workforce.
Well, and the other wonderful thing about this site is you can walk to work, walk to the store, walk to school. And so we think that building this in the city versus going and looking for beer land out somewhere contributes to a lot of what the comprehensive plan and put density where there is infrastructure. And so anyway, we're excited about it.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Andy at this time?
My only question, just more curiosity, the condominium complex, are they medium or the R8 as well? Okay, so for everything there.
Nothing.
It's all within the R8? Okay, cool.
Steve, did you have something to say?
Nope, I'm good.
Nope, I'm happy, thanks.
All right, okay, well, I'd say continue working with Meredith and Ann Morgan and staff. All right. Okay, we're going to jump back to see if anybody is here for Nelson's Industrial Construction regarding Kron Lane Design Review. What are you there? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any of the commissioners would like to be, have pulled off and addressed individually?
Good clarifying comment for you, those cops during packet review. Prior to hearing the Dawson Trail subdivision last month in October, I hadn't updated the project description on the agenda. The revised materials and the findings and conclusions in your packet reflect going from an originally proposed four D restricted units down to one due to the effects of eliminating one of the units to meet the site design requirements. So all of the materials and the records submitted do match that one deed restricted unit. It's just that the project description on the agenda does not, so I claim that.
Everything that was presented during the hearing that was correct with the one, it was just type one out. Okay. All right. Any other questions, thoughts on that, any items you want to pull off? Are we good with it as a package?
You motion for that?
Yes.
Motion that we accept the consent agenda as stated.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion is approved. Okay, we're moving on to old business. We have CP 2402, Pilgrim Cove Master Plan Update. And we have, we have a name on here on who sent that item?
We have Jeremy Forsen Albusch.
Jeremy Forsen, who would like the presentation regarding that?
What's that?
On that plans?
Jeremy Forsen, the executive director of Pilgrim Cove, address 1075 Plumb Road in McCall. And we're just back from, I think we sent all the stuff in that you needed. So I think that's kind of where we're at, is what are the next steps?
But you did.
Specific revisions that were asked for before was the exact location of the pavilion, which I believe that was submitted with the updated drawings. And then there was a revision to take out the, I think it was called the wedding chapel or something and remove it. To being a pavilion, we did that. And then we sent in the documentation showing about speed zone and all of that and the other stuff. So I think we met all the criteria you asked for.
There's some road improvements involved here, road and parking improvements involved also.
This is, we're not, we're not expanding our beds or anything like that. It's just an update to go less dense with our housing situation. We had a lot of bunk beds, a lot of real tight housing and trying to spread that more conventional use. Well, less bed density.
You know what, and I just realized I forgot to open the public hearing on this item. Real quick, I make a motion, we open the public hearing?
So I could?
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
You opposed? No, okay, it's open and we'll take that previous comments and add that into the record. So sorry about that, I have my note here. So any questions? I know there was some discussion kind of on that. I guess it'd be the, was it the northern buffer or the southern buffer? And the neighbor, was there stuff moved or adjusted on that, wasn't there?
Yeah, we adjusted it. I don't know what, I think the city setback is what, 15 feet on the property line? And we're shown 47 feet from the property line on the setback. We also, as part of the plan, we're going to have a solid wall on the side facing the property to, you know, we're planning on having an outdoor kitchen anyways, but to kind of help shield the noise and stuff like that. So, and after, remember it's a day use pavilion, it's not an overnight building. So.
All right. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay.
Thank you.
Right, Meredith's staff report?
Yes, and boo boo oopsie number two by the new city planner. We put last month's staff report into the packet, so I'll review this month's, today's staff report with you the points that I added just on the updated materials. So I sent that out to your emails and have it spread. But yes, this is another visit for the master plan update for the existing Pilgrim Cove camp over there on the little inlet of the lake, not the big inlet of the lake. We heard this last at the September 10th Planning and Zoning Meeting. Samuel, you are allowed to deliberate and make a vote as a member, just that you've hopefully reviewed whatever was provided to you. So updates that were submitted do include an updated site scan, both moving and identifying where that pavilion is or the shoreline area, eliminating structures from the shoreline and or setback area. They provided a traffic memo and description of like the maximum possible number of trips that the camp generates, which is what we can request, given the lower number of trips generated by camps in circumstances like this. And they did provide copies of the camp documents that get sent out to groups coming to visit as their disclaimers and warnings or requests regarding being good neighbors to the neighbors surrounding the area, as well as a memo relating to any wetlands or soggy soils along property. A lot of those were filled in for the creation of the baseball field way back in the day. So we don't really ding on that, but it's acknowledged to know what the people in past did. The revised materials based on public comments received. And since this addition of the packet and review went out, do include continued the proximity and likely or perceived likely uses and noise generated by the pavilion as well as the RV pad sites that are both existing and to be kind of re-coordinated further south along that westerly property line. And so it's really, the concerns at this point, as I understand them, are really focused on the pavilion and the RV pad sites and whether there's any additional jiggering or relocation on the site plan that could accommodate neighbor concerns. But the neighborhood, I believe, is here and ready to advocate for their needs during the public comment time period. And I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Meredith?
Meredith, do we have any drawings that show where the pavilion has moved from and to at all?
Of the two, I could pull up the there's two. With about 47 feet from the technically west, I think, property line. And then this is where the RV pad site area is along that same west property line. And let's see if I can pull up the old one.
There are only like three RV sites in there currently, correct?
I might not be able to answer that, but we
Perhaps the applicant can let us know what, what's there. And then there's a structure, I think, that's built there as well.
Their question, sorry.
How many RV sites total was it? I thought it was five, three, yeah, five.
Five, and two of those are, have already gone away with the new cabin. So with the update, there'll probably only be three RV sites left on the property. And they're mainly for staffing. You know, we did get some guests that come in, but we really have limited RV usage over the last few years, trying to get folks to actually use our buildings instead of, you know, we're not an RV park, we're a camp, so. And there's no
Chairman Lyons, Chairman Lyons, I guess that was really kind of addresses the question. I, I know there's a structure that's being built in there and I was confused whether it was RV sites or another structure that's not on this plan.
There's a new cabin being built, it's one, it'd be number 22. And then there were 31, I can't read the numbers, but the next three, those were existing RV, are existing RV sites. But as the money's raised to build the new cabins, those RV sites will go away.
But then you still show five RV sites, so perhaps someone can make me understand that or help me understand how that works. And I guess my biggest concern about that is they are not 47 feet away from the property line.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, come on up, I know they may have a couple of questions for you.
Hi, hello, my name is Al Bush, I live at five oh five South Philippine Street in Boise, Idaho. Uh, I've been on the board for Pilgrim Cove Camp since two thousand and seven, and we've seen a lot of improvements, paint and cleaning and fixing and all that, and that keeps us busy. Uh, this is an old camp. Properties were actually purchased by the churches between nineteen twelve and nineteen fifteen, and the first lodge actually opened up in nineteen twenty. Uh, as used by the churches, summer camp ever since, and every year, I can't, I'm not old enough to go in early years, but uh, since I've been on the board, it's, it's been relatively a busy place. And talking about the RV lot, right now, along the fence line adjacent to our western neighbor, I believe there's still two or three lots, RV lots left. That have full hookups. And along, along here where the, where these three cabins are showing, there are RV hookups there too. Uh, by the, the last master plan, we had, we were allowed up to nine, I believe. I think we only had, only built seven. Uh, so as these cabins are being built, uh, those RV lots will disappear. And I gotta admit, I'm one of the guys that uses the RV lots, because I go up there and I fix things and we got, it's busy, we got people there and I don't want to take a cabin away from somebody, so I just bring my own. And that's, that's just the easiest. And in the future, uh, I think there might be just a couple left along the, along the west line. I had to get all the cabins in.
Are they, they're not, or are they showing in that grayed up area? Yeah, kind of right, and that's where they're, okay, good, it's kind of blended in, that's what I was thinking. And those are existing?
Yes, those are existing. Those are existing, and then you can see they got sanitary sort of located in a few places here.
But there's not intention to build more RV pads, just.
No, no, we're gonna be using them because it's, they're just not used enough. And we can do better, I think people enjoy having a little cabin with a view of the lake, uh, on the top of the hill, it'd be a lot better.
Like the five green uh, squares there, that's RV pads, right? So those.
These green, right, they're uh, twenty-two is under construction, that's a cabin. Uh, thirty-one, twenty-five and twenty-six are future cabins.
Oh, I see.
But there are RVs hookups there right now.
Then those will be removed, when, when the cabins start to.
When a cabin goes in.
Okay, okay.
Yes, yes.
And the forty over the other side, the what's, same thing?
And these here.
No, no, forty on the other side of the page.
That's the.
Yeah.
That is a, a waterfront pavilion, that's just the roof. Uh, is to keep shade off uh, the people when they're down on the beach.
Was that storage for, what, what are, summer materials or?
Uh, no, forty doesn't exist right now.
Oh.
It used to be the winter cabin, which is, we moved up here, it used to be a cabin there. But a uh, massive tree, I mean, a massive tree uh, fell down and just crushed it right to the floorboards, and luckily nobody was in it.
That was, is still on your drawings as being there or still your drawings as, you can repair it or what?
Uh, that's, that's the one right here, that's number twenty-two, that is the replacement for the cabin that got crushed.
Oh.
And at the location, at number forty is where we want to put a pavilion, just an open air structure. To give our, our people at the beach some, some shade and some tables to eat at.
And that's not drawn into that at all yet, right?
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe he was part of sixteen or something like that, but okay.
No, no, this is a new rice lodge that was built in the sixties.
Good. Okay, I'm with you.
Any more questions?
And what is building four there?
Building four.
Building four is a relocation of a cabin, I believe.
Brewster's Brig.
Brewster's Brig, yeah, that's. That's a nineteen thirties WPA building. They already had finished the inside, we might use it for storage, we might fix it up and, it's got bunks in it right now.
It's just a relocation, this cab.
Yeah.
The cab, no, it's the one by Leahy.
Yeah, this one here.
Yeah, but it's a relocation of the cabin that exists.
Oh, this one, yeah, that's.
Correct, it's just moving it so there's more space between the buildings.
That, there's a, behind number seventeen, there's a propane tank that uh, needs better access in the winter. Our propane guy doesn't like to slog through deep snow.
Okay.
I believe there was one other building that was within, within the fifty-foot setback, have you moved that as well?
Other buildings in the fifty-foot setback.
That was when the chapel platform.
Oh, yeah, that's, we moved that, uh. Up the bed.
There.
Stranger, number thirty-eight, that's just gonna be a future pavilion, and then thirty-nine is a staircase down to a possibly a future dock. But that's outside the fifty-foot zone. The only thing we got inside the fifty-foot zone right now, I believe, is the fire suppression pump house. And that's existing. That's got a diesel operated pump for uh, fires, for fire sprinklers up in Grease Lodge, and for the hydrants, and for the hydrants, yeah.
Okay, Commissioners, any other questions at this point? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Morgan.
Hello, Commissioners, um. Don't think I had a formal engineering review the last time this came to the hearing. Um, some edits are still needed. Better, but we're working for final engineering approval. Um, on the stormwater side, I need to schedule a time with their engineer to talk about the, the modeling method that was utilized. Um, they, they used a HECAZ program to do um, the stormwater modeling, which I've only seen it typically used for rivers and floodplain analysis, so understanding that more. And really getting some of those details to show at the detention of the first flush and years, and the ten-year storm is being achieved. I know their, their goal is to maintain and detain the hundred-year storm onsite without that. Um, I just need a little bit more information to provide that assurance um, in my mind. Um, let's see, so I think they're getting there. There was um, a statement made that. There might be wetlands closer towards the, the relocation and construction of the docks, but it hasn't been verified. Um, so that'll be something that'll play into that stormwater management for the property. Um, and getting that documented in the report that gets approved. Um, regarding the traffic memo, it does a good job overall, like general what their traffic is, um, it's missing a few items. Um, like event traffic, it doesn't mention what event traffic might be for weddings, um, and it's missing a conclusion of will there be impacts to the roadway system? Um, but just putting a bow on it. So that it's very clear if there will or will not be impacts to the roadway system.
That's still gonna obviously be conditioned upon your approval on the normal.
It would.
Engineering approval. Right, Commissioners, any other questions for Morgan this time? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we'll go to public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself, and it takes a few seconds. Can anybody online or on the phone wish to comment? Application. Okay, then we'll go to the audience, and I know Judy is here, she has her attorney. Um, her attorney is gonna make a presentation in regards of Judy Leaster, one of the neighbors, so.
Those are in the meeting.
Yeah, we do have the letters and there's meeting packet. And so, um, with Judy, she is not gonna personally comment, but she's gonna have her attorney address. And with that, I'm gonna suspend the three-minute limitation with her attorney because she's making a formal presentation on that, so if you'd like to come up and name an address?
My name is Tricia Soper, I am with the firm Pearson and Soper in Boise, and our address is three fourteen South Ninth Street, Suite three hundred. I am here speaking on behalf of Judy Leaster, Judy is the associate of the Leaster family. And she owns property that is directly west of Pilgrim Cove. So I have taken um, one of the applicant's maps and kind of rotated it because spatially, I, I can't handle it if it's not north-south, so I reoriented that for myself. So the, the lake is to the north, and this is the western boundary here, and I've just put in Judy, where Judy's house is and where Judy's garage is relatively in relation to the Pilgrim Cove camp. And I'm not an architect, so I don't pretend that this is to scale, this is to give you a general idea of where her house and property sits. And then on the next slide. This is just a Google Earth, and it's a little dark, but I'm pointing to Judy's house, her, um, brought us here. Where the red circle is, is kind of the general location of the pavilion, um, at the proposed location of the pavilion, and that's the number forty on um, the applicant's map. And then that's the third one. So this is um, taken from Judy's deck, and it's looking toward where the pavilion will sit, and the little red building, I believe, is the new rice lodge. Is that right? Okay.
And it would be just between where that bush is with the snow.
Yeah, just. And so that's just kind of to give you a little overview of where her property sits. And um, Ms. Leaster has coexisted with Pilgrim Cove Camp for twenty-seven years, her family is on that property. Um, never really complained about it, but what she has noticed over the years is that the camp has evolved from more a kid type camp to more of an adult-centered. For a better word, for lack of a better word, event center, um, so there certainly are still camps, but there are adult-centered events as well. And um, keep in mind that Pilgrim Cove does allow alcohol onsite for their events. Um, we all know sometimes our inhibitions, you know, are lessened, um, sometimes things are noisier when we have alcohol. So Ms. Leaster is opposing the CUP, not because she's opposed to people having fun on the site and frolicking in the water and children playing, that is not the issue. The issue is the after-hours events, the um, there are supposed to be quiet hours from twelve, uh, from ten PM to eight AM. And Ms. Leaster testified last time and also submitted a very articulate letter that really set forth her experience over the years. And um, uh, in terms of people, you know, not obeying the rules and going down by the water, we all know that water carries uh, sound, and so we have um, a proposed pavilion going right very near her property, very near these western boundary neighbors, and um, the pavilion is intended to be and will be a gathering place, and, and that's okay, um, except as it relates to after-hours events. And so um, in addition to Ms. Leaster's just personal experience, and, and I believe her neighbors have submitted some things as well. Um, we wanted to really go through the standards that have to be met here, and I, I know all the Commissioners are well aware and is taught, well aware of the city code. And the standards that have to be met are under um, city code three point one, three point oh-three, seven B, and there are twelve standards that have to be met. And they don't, it's, it's more than just the applicant stating that they can meet these standards. This commission has to actually find that the standards can be met as a matter of fact. So we have people telling you what their experiences are already, um, in terms of noise and after-hour noise in, in particular, and then we have. Um, a pavilion going very close to the property line, and then four additional cabins that are gonna be down here as well. And, and I understand the applicant's previous testimony was that the RV sites are gonna go away, they do exist on the map, so from my read of this map, there are still five RV hookups. In addition to the four cabins that are gonna be added, and then of course, in addition to the pavilion. So we're adding a significant amount of density along that western boundary, and that's the closest boundary to their neighbors. And so, under city code, we have um, the three um, standards that we are most um, interested in, of course, and. The applicant is responsible for making sure that the character of the environment is not changed, the character of the neighborhood, that the general welfare of the neighbors is not negatively impacted. And of course, most importantly here, um, is that there would not be unreasonable noise caused by this proposed use. And of course, the proposed use is in existence as a camp, but we are, really, it's an expansion of that use, and um, because we're adding extra buildings, we're adding extra lodging facilities and things like that. So as far as the noise, again, it's the after-hours noise that's the problem, and um, and of course, for the additional camp standards. Um, they, the standard is that there cannot be a permanent negative impact due to excessive noise. That is greater than that would be expected for development in that area, and of course, this is the low-density R four, since, um, so. So this isn't a matter of Ms. Leaster just being a grouchy neighbor and saying, not my backyard, it's been in her backyard for twenty-seven years, and it's been okay. But she's already experiencing problems, her neighbors are already experiencing problems, and then we're going to add significant density along that battery. It's, it's just the wrong location for that pavilion, whether they woe off one side or not, people are going to gather there, it's just, that's who we are as humans, and if the party is. Gonna go on at ten, you know, past ten PM, people aren't even gathered where they can gather, and the pavilion would be a great um, spot. Um, if you could click to that fourth slide. So this, again, I've reoriented this map, but this is kind of a general overview, and if you look right here to this kind of odd-shaped little building, that's the director's cabin. So here is the pavilion, clear up here, here is the director's cabin, and it, it's, it's clear across the camp, so the director's not dealing with the noise, the neighbors are dealing with the noise. And that's really the problem, so it seems as though a better location could be found for that pavilion to where it could be moved more internal to the camp. Um, perhaps on the other side of the um, the old rice lodge. And, and so it just, the, the, the burden here is being borne by the neighbors, it's not being borne by the director's camp, it is not being borne by the people attending the camp. It is borne by these neighbors, and that is not fair, and it frankly does not meet the standards. And then if we can go to that last slide. This is, this is off of um, the applicant submissions, and these highlighted areas are the applicant's highlights. So of course, um, the first highlight is if alcohol is allowed, they have to initial that, and then this part right here is talking about um, the noise after ten PM and seven AM. And so, um, I, I listened to the public testimony last time, and I heard the applicant speak about, you know, this huge list of rules and, and, you know, all of these things. This is a two-page piece of paper that you can click down to the second page of rules. Um, it's kind of hidden, if you go, if you go back up to where the noise is, it doesn't say noise, it doesn't say anything like that, it's just kind of right there. And um, and here's the problem, if you have an event, we've all been to events, we've all been to reunions, we've all been to um, you know, weddings. Where the person organizing it is the person signing the documents, right? They're initiating for alcohol, they're initiating for the rules. The seventy-five people, the hundred people that are on site for that, for that event, don't necessarily sign off on these rules. We have a director who's clear across the camp, and you've got adults that are gonna gather because the adults are gonna gather, and you've given them a prime location to gather at that pavilion. And so we believe that one of two things should happen, the CUP should be denied as it is, or there should be conditions imposed. And the conditions would include moving that pavilion to a site more internal to the camp, and possibly limiting the density of those cabins as well. Because the combination of those things is, is really putting pressure on that western boundary. If anybody has any questions, I'll answer.
You said seventy-five people that attend the event, they wouldn't sign off on something like this? Well, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be normal policy anyway, would it?
Well, my understanding is that, you know, normally the, the organizer is the one signing, they're the ones paying, whatever. It's, it's not my experience, and maybe the director can talk about this, um, whether every per, single person has to sign off on the noise ordinance.
Yeah, that would be a little, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I think at this point, you know, usually just public comment, we don't have questions back and forth on this one. I know it's a little different, we allow the attorney to present, but it's just for public comment at this point, so.
Understanding is that this is just kind of signed by whomever, um, and. What, what Ms. Leaster is telling you, what the neighbors are telling you, is that these nor, noise ordinances are not being enforced now. And that's before the pavilion goes in, before the additional four cabins go in. So it's of concern now, it's going to be of greater concern if that pavilion goes inward.
Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Would anybody else here in the audience that wish to comment regarding this application? Okay, one more time, anybody on the phone or online that wished to comment regarding this application? And you might need to hit star six to unmute yourself. All right. With that, would you guys like to? Answer any questions?
Say questions. The only thing that I would like to address about the noise issue and that, I've only been here for four years. So the previous twenty-three years, I'm not sure what, how the camp was managed run. I know that I've had one phone call in four years about noise. And I dealt with it. Secondly, even though my house is on the other side of the property, people who know I'm there, I'm patrolling at night, I'm out and about making sure people are there. We're not just an adult facility. We still have eight to ten weeks of kids camps in the summer. So we're probably in the fifty-fifty. As far as addressing the contractual issues when people arrive, every group that arrives, I give them the rules to the entire group once they arrive. So they know what the expectations are while they're on the property. And does that mean that we don't get somebody doing something silly in the middle of the night? Yeah, it happens. But I'm usually down there dealing with it immediately because we do have neighbors and things like that. So I, I don't want to be a painted picture that we're not doing it and the neighbors are taking the brunt of it. Unfortunately, she is probably the closest to the bulk of the camp. Everybody else is on the backside and around of the camp. But that waterfront area is the only waterfront area we have on our property. And the whole idea of the pavilion, to put it there, was to have shaded, safe space for folks to be when they're down on the waterfront. We have no other space to put it. So. Questions?
Commissioners, any questions? It looks like you have several other proposed dock areas on the waterfront. Is there not room for a pavilion there?
There could be in the future if we have a dock, but right now our main dock and water, we only have one true waterfront area. We might have another dock, but it won't be a swimming area. We only have one sandy beach and we're not going to be allowed by the, the, this IDR. We can't build another beach or another swimming area on the lake. We're, we're, we're kind of stuck to that hundred and fifty feet of sand that we have existing. So.
How much was the pavilion moved from the previous application? I know it was a little bit, was it?
I, I don't know where it was originally setting. We, I think it was originally set about twenty-five feet. I think the city setback is, is it fifteen or twenty-five?
It's fifteen original.
We went at least twenty-five and then we went down and measured it after the last one. And we're trying to keep the space between the buildings, but it's thirty-seven feet now off the property line. Any other questions?
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Okay.
All right, we will pose the public comment section. Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Before we close the public hearing and go to deliberations.
Morgan, you, can you clarify what's missing on a road or a traffic plan and wetlands?
Sure. Starting with the traffic. It has some analysis on what they, their maximum trip would be considering soccer club at their camp that comes. So they do some analysis on that. And then they do an analysis of their off-season impacts, which is mostly staff going to and tours and groceries and mail runs. So they have the pieces there, but it doesn't talk about event traffic for like reunions or weddings where maybe not everyone is staying at the camp. I don't, I don't know how those are structured. So including descriptions of that and how many people may be permitted at some of these might include, might help with some of that traffic memo. And then just like a defined conclusion of here's what are proposing for me not be.
Okay. I'm, I'm guessing it would be difficult to compare a church camp bus coming in with all the kids versus a hundred-person wedding with fifty cars.
In the report, they do say that they use single, like cars to shuttle the players around one driver and three to four players per car. But they do go into detail about that. So I don't think there's a large bus that comes, at least not what's mentioned in the traffic memo.
No, I was referring more to when it was a church camp ten, fifteen years ago. Kids come on Saturday and leave on Saturday. So.
Yeah. But there's the traffic kind of overview of things I think could be added to make it a more complete report. And then, and as item I have received from their engineer, they mentioned some of the soils around the camp. I could pull that up a quick, but it mentions that they haven't done a formal wetland delineation, but they, they suspect that there might be wetlands near where the docks might be reconstructed and moved. And that that needs to be verified at the time before that work is completed because that requires like Army Corps of Engineer permits and others if they're being impacted, if the wetlands are being impacted. And that's one of our components in our stormwater drainage report is to mention if there's wetlands on the site.
Okay. And, but those don't show up in conditions of approval, right? Currently, Meredith?
Not in the conditions of approval, but it would show up as final engineering approval. But if you want to put it in two places, you're always allowed to do that.
No, that's more work for you guys.
We don't have any drawings or any specs. Or I mean, we have some specs, but no real drawings of the pavilion, do we?
No, that we have is.
There was a description of it, but I'm not, I don't remember any drawings. Well, that's the cabin.
Well, forty, that's the that's what it is, but there's no architectural plan.
Oh, yeah. That's the building. Okay, I was thinking that was one of the cabins.
Can I talk at all? We've just had some questions and it seemed like I got some answers.
Well, we've kind of closed the public comment at this point. So. But I guess if we do have any questions, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant before we close the public hearing?
Well, there's this question about the wetlands and what used to be wetlands got covered up by the excess soils from when the sanitary sewer was put in around the lake. So there used to be a wetlands there, but it's been getting repaired a long time ago. And it seems like we're deliberating, right?
Well, not quite yet. Just making sure. Any other questions before we close the public comment? That would make sure if there's any questions for the applicant or any questions for staff before we close and go into deliberations. So again, any other questions for staff or or the applicant?
So for a question for the applicant, I mean, you're, you're saying that the pavilion is a shade structure for daytime use. Would it, would it be used for events?
Just daytime. I mean, we don't use the beach at night. You know, it's supposed to be closed at night, although I've heard in the past that people have snuck out there. We have some doctor's groups. Yes, they actually.
But you don't, you don't, you wouldn't anticipate using it for an event?
No, no.
So for restriction that way?
No.
Like it wouldn't impact your operation that much?
Chairman, a consideration to that end is you guys have the authority to impose additional conditions. We, with the conditions as written and with the existing conditional use permit for the camp, don't have any requirement of any sort or ability to provide pushback if that kind of honor system rule is broken going into the future. There's not any grounds for re-review of the application or the permit at the point at such as like three weekends in a row, there has been after-hours flurry in the pavilion area or down on the beach area. Right now, there's no mechanism for recourse. And with this being in the impact area, that's a very complicated joint procedure where we need to have something to fall back on. So if you are worried about there being some kind of backstop for events happening in that location, that would be something to add to the conditions of approval. But it'd be like a prohibition on events down in the beach area all times of day or after ten PM, whatever you're drawn to in that respect. And that would be a violation of the conditional use permit instead of just a general ordinance out in the county or something.
Would it, would that be the, would that be the way to go out and maintain calmness or quiet in that area? Or would that be, yeah, like you said, a conditional use permit violation? Or how would that come together? Because it's in the impact area.
It provides a tool, for example, for like the neighbors to report or even the applicants and property owners to say like, our campers are, are causing us to violate this. And there would be a tool to see if it's working, what isn't. Michelle, or the Development Director, can you speak to that? Has that worked in the past? Or have we considered using tools like that before? But that would be one tool at your disposal in addition to, for example, recommending that we take another look at the site plan and figure out if that's an appropriate location. But it seems to be like the pressure point is.
It is handled internally, not by Bellic County Sheriff or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So for example, other camps tend to call the sheriff's office, but they don't actually have a noise ordinance to respond to things with for the county area. So it really falls back on what are the camp standards and what are the conditional use permit standards that can be enforced by this office and the county prosecutor's office.
Same. Okay.
So Meredith, would that be like the CUP for the Airbnb up in Aspen Ridge that's reviewable every year?
You could create a condition that mirrors a similar idea, yes.
So Michelle Green, Development Community and Economic Development Director. Meredith is correct in that a conditional use permit is an entitlement that runs with that property. So there isn't really a way to, I mean, I think if there's a clear violation, it could potentially be revoked. But that gets into some legal civil stuff or I'd say more on the legal side. So I think it is good to create standards for evaluating the conditional use to make sure it's working. And then, and that there are not violations. This one is a little tricky because it is in the impact area. So we're not able to send out like city code enforcement. Ultimately falls to the sheriff's office, the county commissioners, this relates to the land use process. And I think, as mentioned, I think this has been a little bit of an evolution from, it's a CUP for a summer camp, but it kind of does cross into some of those kind of more commercial activities. Having events and, and, and conferences, it sounds like. So, so I think it's okay to impose additional conditions as part of this entitlement. And maybe Phil, I don't know if you have anything to add on in terms of the enforceability? Is it related to the standards that the commission would recommend for consideration?
No, I mean, I, I think you and Meredith really covered it. I mean, this is the kind of thing that, you know, we'd want to get feedback from the commissioners and then, you know, as the staff, sit down and really do a good job of drafting it in a way that, as you said, the enforcement is the difficult piece. And, you know, if, if we don't have conditions that we can enforce, then they're they're worth nothing. And so that would be something that, if there is something that we want to add to the conditions that Meredith has proposed, we want to get that direction and be able to come back to the commission with what our, our proposed language would look like after we put some real thought into the enforcement mechanism.
We have a distance between, and I think it's building sixteen, I think, and that pavilion, do we? Pull that up so we can see. Help see that.
The one, the one they're currently constructing?
I think so. Isn't that number sixteen?
That's twenty-two.
From what I can see. One next to the pavilion.
Oh, that's existing?
Yeah, the big building is sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. There we go. But it's pretty close.
Well, it's pretty close.
I'm going to change it. So that's forty-seven feet. So if I'm eyeballing, that's probably between ten and fifteen.
I'm dead.
Yep, from here. Fifteen.
Okay, not much.
And the minimum setback between buildings is we don't usually recommend that.
I don't see a few feet making a difference on that. And currently, the pavilion is obviously an all-open wall or open. There, there's no wall. And they've been mentioned to do a wall.
On this west-facing side.
Okay, that's right. Because they added the wall to that. But we add, if there was a wall to the
To the south as well.
Yeah. Think that would help avoid some noise along with now. It would definitely contain the noise better, potentially, at least within the pavilion, which that's what we're talking about now. And then if we had part of with the mechanisms of CUP, but also have some set times that that could be used, period. I mean, if it's sunset or, or not sunset, but you know, it's the only times it can be used. Because right now, there is no set times for that, I don't believe. It's just, okay, general. There's no set, oh, the pavilion is supposed to be closed as of ten o'clock. Okay. And it's an only beach area. Okay, Commissioners, other questions for staff and/or applicant?
I think one thing too is that you could break apart the components of the conditional use too. If the commission is struggling, for example, with the pavilion, you might consider the other improvements and either eliminate that or put more stringent conditions on that piece of it. So this is what's being proposed, but ultimately you have to find that it meets those twelve conditions for the entire site plan and master plan. It's a reminder.
Any other?
So along those lines, you know, most everything within the master plan.
You know, most everything within the master plan. Many of the buildings throughout that are not. We don't have concerns about, we don't have concerns about some of the docks and whatnot. They'll have to go through. Proper. Processes and approvals and whatnot to to add those. The ones that we're worried about are. The closest cabin that they're currently constructing, so that will actually is going in place and they're just replacing. R V pads with those structures and essentially the pavilion. So that's. If anything is to be of concern, it'd be the pavilion.
Seems like for the most part, the pavilion. With that. Extra. You know, area to condense the people. And.
And as far as the conditional use permit on the pavilion, you can do anything you want with that as far as rules and regulations or. Times of activities and that kind of thing, is that?
To a point.
Reasonable.
Yeah, to a point, we can't do anything. Try to limit the impact.
I'm thinking of just what we're looking at right here right now, so yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a lot of it's. You know, to try to get it to a point where it. You know, it goes through the twelve criteria.
Sure.
And limits the impact to the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, not just the one, but neighbors in general. So if we can come up with some. Ideas and things that would work for the applicant and. Again, limit the impact and so it would qualify through the twelve criteria of the conditional use permit. Sam hasn't had a chance to go through multiple times like we've had lately. You just wait. But, you know, yeah, so trying to do that.
Like to go through those criteria?
Probably be a good idea.
You could close the public hearing or you can leave it open if you feel you're not ready to make a decision tonight. So both of those are open to you. And you could do it now or you could.
Well, it kind of goes into deliberation. I guess if we can, we can still.
Close it and reopen it, yes.
But if we want those twelve criteria during our deliberation, that's.
I can read them to you as a matter.
And read them to me as a, okay, so we don't have to have them if we need them. Commissioners, what's your thoughts? Do you want to hear the criteria? Probably would be a good idea with Samuel not having to have heard them multiple times.
Well, there's for me too, yeah.
There's additional criteria for camps.
There are.
Right, an additional five or six.
Five. You to just sprint through them now, or do you want to enter deliberations? Have me read them one by one that you deliberate.
What's the five new ones?
Five.
Let's go over that one.
The squishy time period in the public hearing. So the five additional conditional use permit standards for camps. A conditional use for a camp may only be approved if the commission finds that the use as applied for. Standards of general conditional use permits or typical twelve. As well as will not have a permanent negative impact on those items listed below substantially greater than that anticipated from. Usually permitted development in the zone, so that would be within the R four zone. And those include a negative impact on pedestrian, pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety. Two is the demand for an availability of public services and facilities. Number three is the disruption or. Of enjoyment of neighboring properties by excessive, excessive noise. Or is environmental pollution or contamination to air and water resources? And number five is the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities.
All right, commissioners, any other questions or ready to move? To close the public hearing and go to deliberation. Before we do that, again, any other questions for the staff or the applicant? One once, twice. All right, with that, I make a motion. We close the public hearing, this item.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, we'll go to deliberations. I think overall, it pretty much, I mean, the cabins and replacing the R V site, I'm guessing that hopefully the cabins would. Probably a little bit be more of a buffer and less outside noise there. But I think it really is the pavilion and trying to mitigate the noise ramifications for the surrounding area with that.
So that area, you know, that that's. That's a gathering place, always has been, always will be going forward. The beach and the lake draws, that's the. The dock area. There'll be activity there whether there's a pavilion there or not. Now, I guess for me, with a master plan, we're able to. Have conditions, conditions that they can. Or in times past, they don't have that. Maybe you don't have that to the extent that we could. To be late what those things are. Having a pavilion there, I don't, I don't know that's gonna. Change what's happening. But if there's a, it seems like there's a problem or there's becoming more of. Disruption to the neighbors. Just in general, just with how things are changing over time. That's kind of the bigger, bigger thing. For me, it's not necessarily the building's gonna. Create more problems, I think. Just. It's already, they're already starting to maybe have some of those things that they're dealing with, so it'll just. I don't know. It's not like it's changing, but it is. For all, before, before any of this happened, it's already changing. That's my thought.
Dana, Liz, your thoughts?
So I, I see creating a physical structure in that space. Will increase the use of that space. I think it will draw people. I'm concerned about the ability to control the time of those gatherings. I'm concerned about having gatherings in that space. And having those amplified. And that those impacts on the neighbors. So for me, I'm, I'm struggling with how having the pavilion in that location. Can meet number three of the conditional use permit. Standards, you know, designed, constructed, operated and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate. Et cetera, as well as the specific camp conditional use permit standard of. You know, disruption of enjoyment by neighboring properties by excessive noise. So I'm, I'm really struggling with, with having the. The pavilion in that location. My preference would that it be moved someplace more inward to the camp, so it's, it's less impactful to the neighbors of the property line. With all of that said. I'm interested to, to think through what are some kind of enforceable. Standards that we could put on that, the pavilion. That, you know, where we would have an opportunity to kind of pull that authorization. It seems harder, like if, if we give them a conditional use permit authorization to construct this pavilion and then it ends up. Going poorly, like then they have to deconstruct a building like that seems kind of. I, I struggle with that as well, so. So in summary, everything else I think is fine. I think putting additional cabins, you know, it's cabins, it's people staying there. It's a normal use for that space, but the, the pavilion is the hard part. And then I'm struggling with it. That's, that's where I'm at.
Dana or Dave, either one of you?
I'm. Haven't figured out how to turn my camera back on, but I think this is one of the things I struggle with. In these C U Ps constantly. Individuals or groups have a right to use their private property, but I also believe that. Neighbors or the rest of the community has an equal right to. Use their property, so I think I, I like Liz's idea if we can approve this thing. Without the pavilion. I don't see any issues with the other stuff.
Dana, your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I agree with both Dave and Liz. I, if it's just for day use and it's already being used like that. I, I think there are other solutions to providing shelter beyond building a pavilion that will probably. Attract. Other people later at night in that area. So yeah, I agree with Dave and Liz of everything else sounds great. It's the pavilion is the issue and the location.
I don't know. It seems to me that. Yeah, the, the excessive noises is. The potential for excessive noise in that area is kind of the rub with. The closest neighbor is there, but I, I. I also wonder if there isn't a way to. You know, restrict, restrict those hours. You know, because it seems, I, I could see that being. You know, a nice amenity for the, for the place, whereas where the dock is there and. You know, I can think of other parks that I've been to that are. When you have a place to. Get out of the sun and have lunch and that, and that, and if it's. If it's not being used as. You know. Party facility late at night and there's some. You know, restriction that could be placed on it for the type of use, so maybe that needs to be thought about a little bit more. So that just, you know, to kind of just throw it, throw it out. I mean, they're, they're saying that it's difficult to place it elsewhere. And I think, I think that its use is, is kind of paired with that dog if I'm, if I'm hearing. If I'm hearing that right, so. It. I would be interested to see if there isn't a middle ground that couldn't be found between, between the neighbors and some, some restrictions on that use. You know, and if that, if that's holding out that piece of it or maybe reviewing after. A certain time is this, is this, is this working? Is there further restriction that needs to be? Written into the C U P to, to. You know, to allow the neighbors quiet enjoyment of their space, so I, I, I feel like there's probably a middle ground that can be found there, but. I, I don't know if I could spell that out entirely right now, exactly what that is, so. It seems like some restrict, restriction of time and, and use. Is, you know, is probably the way to go in my opinion.
Tony, your thoughts?
Well, you know, the definition of a pavilion is kind of a gathering place for anything that goes on in the camp or the area or. People have things they want to show or, or put on family gatherings and this type of thing. I think you're gonna have to have some type of restriction on. On the hours of operation and or the, you know, noise. I wouldn't say noise abatement, but. Some way to, to, you know, put, put some, some guardrails around, you know, that pavilion itself. I'm thinking about, you know, the area where they're building the cabins and they're, they're eliminating R V hookups. That in itself, I think is going to be. A less noisier area because of cabin sitting there as opposed to a hookup on an R V. And I think that would generate a lot more noise and, and. Maybe not confusion, but just a, a better way that they're shorting things up. As well as the pavilion hours, it is, you know, in my opinion, the best way to go. I don't know what kind of hours that you want to do that or what, what, what timeframe or how, how it should be structured, but I think it's a necessity that. That has happened with, with the pavilion.
I guess to the applicant's comments, if it's just a daytime shade facility. And like Chairman Lyon said, instead of. Side walls on two sides and you limit it to daytime to six o'clock and the. Applicant has some way to. Shut that area down has a possibility for Tom. As far as Tom's middle ground is what we're trying to get there.
Yeah. Well, as I, I can see it being. You know, definitely probably a highly used thing and I think the restrictions, if we can put some timeframe, six is probably a little early in summertime because. The sun's still pretty intense at six o'clock during the summer, but maybe eight o'clock. And that gives time to make sure it's cleared out and I think definitely the walls on it. I think I'd like to see more of a. And a real kind of. Plan instead of just these boxes and show some real architecture on it, what it's look like, how it sits on the property. Typically, like when we see any lakefront with, or having some rendition put into it, our, you know. Computer generated or here's what it's going to look like based on the picture. I'd, I'd really like to see a little bit more. Of that, I believe, especially if we're gonna make some modifications.
Either just the walls here, Robert?
Well, I mean, it's the pavilion and kind of how it sits on the property. I mean, we kind of know, but. Always like to see a little bit more, especially if we're gonna ask for any kind of walls there. And I don't know if maybe there's a way of combination. Of the walls with some additional landscaping around it, so we're just not looking at the back of another building. I mean, the product's fairly close proximity, even though it's moved a little farther now. I mean, the trade off is you're gonna block some of that view because you're not looking through a pavilion to the lake. Or you're gonna have some of the noise. And with that really being the only beach area, they, they've tried to move it over where they can, but. Like I say, I don't know if it's landscaping berm or combination of that and trees plus the walls could end restriction on timeframe. As well as what we also need to do is, you know, mechanisms of recourse within the C U P. I am just wondering with.
So Bob, you're looking at potential motion three with some information on powers of operation, building design and construction. What else, Liz?
I think also the mechanisms for, you know, enforcing the C U P.
Not especially, yeah.
Hours of operation for the pavilion.
With that, ways to control like limitation of gatherings or, you know, the size of the groups, you know, some, you know, where we don't have one person calls a hundred person party to the pavilion. Like try to avoid those kinds of. Events.
I think, I think enforcement and review piece of it is pretty interesting. But it almost kind of feels like we're sitting here trying to mediate a discussion that likely should be had between. The two property owners. It almost feels like. This application coming forth has touched the nerve. Between the neighbor to the west. Based on, you know, a new, a new structure that wants to be put in there, and I think this is all. Is all healthy if it, if it gets sent back. If there's a way. You know, that, that. Perhaps they could have that conversation and represent and police themselves, you know, what, what is, what is that, you know, propose hours. Proposed restricted use and then come back here and then I, I think in that time. You know, we could. Researcher understand a little bit more about what, you know, what that, what the hammer would be. You know, should, should we, you know, should we get outside of whatever, you know, whatever was worked out and proposed. Between the two neighbors, but it does kind of feel very much like a mediation between two property owners. You know, kind of based off of this, this rejiggering of the property and. So that's just a couple of thoughts.
And with that. And with that. We could have staff also kind of maybe work with them and kind of also come back with us with some ideas of. Here's what would be the best way for to enforce the CUP going forward. To give the staff and whether it's the sheriff's department or whatever, the the tools, so they're not. Trying to create it. We're not trying to create that tonight. We're. How do we invest enforce the CUP, whether it's every couple of years we review it, but also just the nightly daily. Use so everybody knows, like I say, we're just not creating something that's really not workable for staff and they getting all those phone calls. It or iPhone calls. Well, I I do like that to maybe. Put it, continue it to allow applicant and then. The neighbors to talk and as well as the staff to. If we can massage this, because I mean, I can see the use of it makes sense. But again, see the other side of it and the impact that would have. And it definitely does. Go towards some of the conditions, the and even the extra conditions with the church camp.
You mentioned the sheriff's department, you you talk about after we come up with all the.
Well, just something that hopefully a little bit more. They know that here's the guidelines from the CUP type thing, what was mentioned earlier, so.
That comes ahead of.
Yeah, so I mean, I think staff could. Come up with better conditions. That would be more enforceable than what we're going to probably would be able to do sitting here tonight.
For me, there's, there's. There's infrastructure, which they're trying to build buildings and the pavilion and whatnot, but then. Is this also inclusive of how to run the camp as part of conditions with within the CUP? What are the, is that included within this? I guess that's more of a question. Part of it, yes. And so that's, that's really important for me. That's, that's going, that's the critical part, more so than the infrastructure, but. How they will be allowed to utilize this. And is what is in place already sufficient or is there more and there's. Way we're talking, it seems like there's more that needs to be done.
Yeah, I think so, especially regarding the pavilion. It sounds like that has the most potential of, you know, those buildings, most people are inside. It just, it seems like that pavilion has. You know, the newest item that would draw people and potentially be there later at night. Evenings or whatever, if all of a sudden it's thunderstorm comes through, they're all going to rush there and there'll be louder. Or louder. So I think some enforcement mechanism for staff. And if it becomes continual problem with whatever, then they have that to come back and be able to review the CUP saying, hey, these were the conditions. Hopefully we wouldn't have to, but. But I think, I think having those is is important. And again, it also addresses some of the conditions of the CUP requirements.
Robert, can I ask Bill a question? In this.
Yes, you can ask Bill a question.
We're being, I think part of this CUP is a ten to fifteen year plan. But one of the ex, you know, expiration is if a building permits not applied for. So how do you. Structure multiple building permits? Do we have to come back and every time they. Want to add a new building?
So are you saying a new CUP every time they want to add a new building?
Well, yeah, over over the ten year, ten year life of this plan that they've outlined.
Looks like Meredith has highlighted a provision in there. Meredith, do you want to read that?
General expiration provision in the code is this conditional use permit approval shall lapse and become void whenever the applicant has not applied. For a building permit within one year from the date of initial approval.
So this wouldn't apply to additional building permit requests, buildings outside of the year.
Hey, Dave, if you. My understanding is they're not building all of these buildings at once. They're building them as funding becomes available.
Yeah, so I mean, that's something we're going to want to wrestle with, right? Because. I mean, usually we don't want to give just this ongoing permission that goes on for years and years for a series of reasons. Not the least of which is institutional memory and staff turnover on the part of the city. We should only be permitting really what they're going to do within within a year. I mean, Meredith, I don't, you've probably got some input on that because you're the one that has to live with it.
I mean, when we have and we're technically outside of the public hearing bill, so I don't remember to what extent we're supposed to discuss chat. Do we want to open up the public hearing just for?
I think at this point, oh, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean. The commissioners have like a technical question about, I'm I'm not sure. Like, we're really providing testimony one way or another on this one. This is just answering. You know, a question about the extent to which the conditional use permit applies. You know, moving forward and and as suggested by staff, if we're talking about making. New additions and you want additional evidence from staff, like we're not adding evidence, we're giving analysis on the existing law. And the existing record. So I don't think the public record needs to open. That's my opinion. Now, if we're asking for new evidence to be entered into the the record, that's when we open that public, public hearing again. Does that distinction? Makes sense?
Yes.
I believe the way it is too, by ultimately, if we have this. Plan is approved, we're basically approving the various items they're going to be addressing in the future years. They still have to come and get a building permit. At that time. We're just approving the plan.
I think that, I mean, I just wanted to come up to clarify, you're approving a master plan, right? This is their master sort of build out plan. So if they decide. And, you know, they're going to build this as funding's available. They've indicated that. So I think this provision here is that this this conditional use. They need to apply within one year for the first building permit or it becomes void. However, they may not build everything with the initial building permit, right? So the the idea behind these master plans is that it gives them the ability to master plan their site. And then build it up accordingly. And in some cases, it's twenty years. Some, in some cases, it's been even longer. And so usually it's, I think, something that staff can bring back to you is sort of a timeline for the master plan itself. Usually what happens is like plans change over time, right? So these camps come back. Maybe in ten years they realize, you know what, we really don't want to build out this pavilion and these cabins and we want to do this instead. And so. At the point at which they deviate from the master plan, they have to come back in front of you for a new master plan. So that's, so they're really kind of going for this sort of long term build out plan. That's why I think it's really good to think about uses timelines and enforceability of the overall plan itself.
So you're saying they they don't need a building permit for for just one thing or or just a building permit that encompasses. The the master plan in itself or?
So this is the entitlement for the land use for the master plan. They will need to get a building permit for anything that requires a building permit on here. This doesn't exempt them from getting building permits. So as they come in to build each cabin, they need a building permit for each cabin. But the cabin will need to be located where it's identified on the master plan and it needs to be the same size. If they start really deviating from the master plan, then they need to come back to the planning and zoning commission to get a new master plan. I just wanted to clarify kind of what that process is for camp.
What's that? Unless anything new, I think we're pretty much on the same page with giving time to. Continue with this to the December third.
I don't.
How's your house?
Date specific.
I thought we have to.
What I'm hearing, you're you'd like to see. An actual pavilion rendering or design, architectural design for that piece. As well as a potential timeline for review in regular proposed by the applicant. And then potentially the property's plan to enforce itself. As well as deliberation between the neighborhood and the applicant to come up with solutions for the pavilion location capacity, noise and general. Enforcement. I don't, I don't know how to predict a date for that.
Okay.
So it might be a good idea to to remand it back and have them just work with staff and the neighbors to make reasonable progress. Before scheduling a new public hearing.
Okay, so that would be we.
That'd be number four.
We reopen the public hearing, number four.
No, you would keep the public he- hearing closed, but you would be making a motion to to table it and work on specific items. Being those that we talked about. And then it, for me, it puts the incentive on the applicant to work with the neighbors on those items. So that it's not the deadline looming, it's the desire to get through all of the requested items.
I like that idea.
So in our motion, do we have to outline each of those items or is the minutes sufficient?
You can say as as reflected in deliberations this evening, but please add on to it if I missed anything in that summary.
I would just like to add the staff recommendations on the enforceable conditions that we might consider having.
As far as revoking the CUP, Liz? Now you can make the motion.
All right, I move Chairman CUP twenty four oh two back to staff. To develop more information as discussed in deliberations prior to rescheduling the application for a new public hearing.
Second.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and a second. Meredith, let's do a roll call.
Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
Yes.
Commissioner Rocks.
Yes.
Commissioner Moss.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Paul.
Yes.
Yes. All right. Motion carries. All right, thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to new business. We have. Subdivision twenty four oh two. It is a public hearing. I make a motion. We open the public hearing. Motion and a and a second twice. All in favor? Hey, we have the Indy Sky subdivision at seven hundred Fairway Drive. We got Vince, you'd like to come up and. Let us know what you got.
Good evening, y'all. This is a fairly simple. Little slice off of a.
Oh, do we need your address?
Oh, sorry, Vince Beer, six twelve Diamond, right here in McCall. Really simple slicing off of a lot. And, you know, the the only reason that it has to be a subdivision is because the it's the fifth chunk that we've taken off of that. That piece of land that is all worker housing and my intention is that we would. Bill, I I want to build another worker house on that north end of that chunk of land and. In order to do that, we have to divide it off. Miracle, little miracles is that you guys own the land to the chunk of it, which helps out our setbacks dramatically. It's great. But be simple. And we're slicing out fifty seven feet and. We'll keep the house to the north as much as we can. The access for the garage is on. Seven hundred or still. So that whole street is all full of, the beautiful thing about this really has neighbors that don't care, which is great. Well, it just, it's all, it's all workers on that street. And when we're done, we're going to change the name to Fair Wage Drive. But that's about it. So and I and I intend to build. I I don't know if you know the house at seven oh two Lake Creek that we built that I just think turned out beautifully. And I I intend to, it will be a different design shape, but it's the the colors and the. And the style with the big cedar beams and all that kind. I just love how that looked turned out. So I'm going to copy that in the in the design if I can, so. Yeah, it's that house. So that's a four bedroom. This, then the worker house will build a six bedroom, so. Yeah, it'll, it'll just be a little different, but these are really huge bedrooms and then the other one won't be so much. And part of the ideas. You know, our thing is really worker housing stuff and and I want to have every room, every bedroom. Have their own bath, so it will be, I mean, we're at the max for the number of. Fixtures for the water department, so we'll be right at nineteen fixtures in the house, but you can still do that, get away with it. So, but that's the, that's the plan.
And you do have the EDU from the sewer?
Yeah. I mean, we, I I initially wanted to do a fifty foot lot, which is fine with the city, but. They wanted it to be an eighth of an acre. I mean, just one of those signs. So we're applying and making it bigger than that. So.
Miss, there's any questions for Vince before we go to staff report?
So some of my questions, so you've got, you built a nice, I don't know, the the shop with the house over. Or the living quarters over top.
I didn't, Bruce was the original owner of that.
Okay.
Bruce Muddlin and he, we bought the. Have I made my kids buy the land to the south and then. They built. If they're not, they're single fans, they're they're all fully compliant. But there's. A lot of, they've been six bathrooms. And two to the south and then the other one we. Moved a cabin from on the lake. I'm a real recycler, moved that cabin and put an addition on it. That's full of workers too. And then there's workers living in. We call it the barn, which is right next door that I own. So my kid, my kid's on the three on that end and I'll have the two on this end.
Yeah, so I so I guess the question is access into the barn. I guess it's hard to tell, it's eighteen feet. Between property. Between the garage opening.
Yeah.
And you'll be slicing off a little bit of the concrete pad essentially.
That'll just. Brian and I chatted about that before he left us, but hopefully Meredith with the same mindset that we'll do an access easement. Because the the house will sit. More to the north and there'll be plenty of room to get in. It'd just be access and access easement that. Makes it legally there, access to drive on our of the land. I mean, I own both now. I know I look like I'm going to live forever, but someday I'm going to die and then it'll get split up probably, but but the. You know, that's how we figure out that we're going to deal with that is that access easement.
Meredith, could you pull that map up and zoom in so we can see that? I'm talking about clearer than the little one.
That access easement remains a condition of engineering.
That's coming in right through there, access, yeah.
Yeah, so if 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 you build a forty foot house. You know, it sits somewhere over here. And so you still got plenty of room to. To get in there. So that's the, I mean, I mean, it's not ideal, but. We need another six bedrooms of worker housing, so. That's what I want to do.
And the red red dot or checkered lines, that's that's the property lines right there.
That's the whole, that's the whole hundred and thirty five feet. That's. And that's, this is, this is the proposed.
Fifty seven foot line.
And and we would have done it fifty feet, which would have been better, but the sewer department required it to be. Bigger than that, so. Stuck with that. I mean, you guys would. Bigger than that, so stuck with that. I mean, you guys would have approved a fifty foot. Lot, because that's illegal, five thousand square foot lot, but we have to comply with them. So we are.
And then there's just to the north of that before you reach into the. Right away for the street, that's a little triangle of city ground.
You guys, the city owns this little chunk of ground. Which is great, but then otherwise it'd be a twenty foot setback on the north and you couldn't do it, but because you own it, we're not a corner lot, which is great.
So then access would be over a city ground.
No, it's coming in through the back, the back. It's the same access as everything else. All the garages are on the back. The front door will be on the north side.
Okay.
And I promise I'll mow the city grass and make it look just like we do now.
Should they, it, I feel like it's a little, isn't it a little bit of a wetland area?
No.
Oh, we're going in like the drainage swell.
It it certainly, there there has been a very high water table in there, but when the. The sewers were dug for the two south buildings, they, it broke through a layer of something. Chris Mal, I mean, yeah, Chris Malwich and I talked about that because it was, it was going to be really problematic with redoing the. The water line and everything and it, because I had that that house we moved in, we had to put on a crawl space and. Until we dug that other sewer, we would have a month where there was the sump pump running all the time in that crawl space. And since those sewers were dug, I mean, they had to go down seventeen feet to get to the sewer line. Something's happened that there's, the water table has dropped dramatically, which is great. So, I don't, weird things just don't quite know why, but it certainly has.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Vince before we go to staff report? Thanks. Meredith, staff report.
Excuse me? Can I comment?
Not in the public comment part just yet, but you will be notified when it's time.
Okay, thank you.
Meredith Todd, city planner. Yes, this is technically a preliminary plat for a subdivision because once you make. Four pieces out of a lot of record, any created anytime after, I believe, nineteen eighty six. Then you have to enter in a new, into a new subdivision process, since there's been too many splits in the in the area. To confidently move forward without stricter analysis. So this application is asking to split an existing thirteen thousand five hundred square foot lot into two pieces. Resulting in fifty seven hundred square feet, seventy eight hundred square feet, fifty seven hundred to the north touching the city. Little triangle property and seventy eight hundred holding that barn with the garage underneath that you all are familiar with. It will be a single family residential in use upon splitting, which is permitted within the zone that it's located in. The dimensional standards are all met at this point and I haven't received any public comments of great concern. Uniquely, it's not actually accessed on. Right of way street. It's on an access easement across that gravel road easement that's been created next to Golden Glove Park. But that is, in this case, a permissible permissible form of access to those properties. As it would be much more challenging and not encouraged to access off of Davis. Because there would be going over the drainage swell river through the reeds to get to anywhere you're trying to go. It aligns generally with the existing zoning and future land use plan. It'll generally be surrounded by the Golden Glove Park and that little. Triangle that Morgan, I'm not sure if we acquired it for site distance purposes or for parks purposes, but we have it either way. Else was there to note? We can review the specific standards and criteria for approving subdivisions. Or making decisions on subdivisions as we further into discussion time period. There have been a couple of public comments received that I forwarded out to you relating to concern about. Items being stored in the out of doors on the property. There's not necessarily a whole lot of tools within code to prohibit that, so much as asking for language within CCNRs. Which have not been provided since it's a pretty simple split at this time, but that is open to discussion for you is to see. Some deliberation on if there's a giant kid trike that sits in the lawn. Maybe put it in the garage when you're able to do so, et cetera. Those are pretty common discussions in larger subdivisions that we might see with eighty units or sixteen units or the townhome subdivisions. That we've been seeing where they want to keep a little bit of cleanliness and aesthetic to the eye for neighbors and those within that subdivision. So that is a tool that's available. Other than that. Believe some of our notes include, yes, adding a note on the plat to indicate that the property's access would be coming. From the easement that are the south that already, oh, that's that's out, that already exists. Rather than punching another driveway onto that easement along Golden Glove Park. So that's within the engineering comments. As well as general discussion. And then I included a little history on the different lot splits that occurred. To lead to this situation so that you can understand the chain of events when incremental splits start to happen. So as we see big chunks where somebody wants to cut off one slice, that gives you a little alarm bell in your head to be like. Is this your long range plan? Or do you want to come back to us for a subdivision plat the next time you want to cut a chunk off? Because we're starting to see quite a few of these incremental subdivisions. That may just answer any questions.
I had a question on recommended condition of approval number two. Is that a placeholder or am I misunderstanding terminology?
Oh, no, that's a placeholder from when Brian made the staff report templates. They do not need a cooler water slide. Thank you.
But we should ask for one.
I I was really hoping to see some drawings for a cooler water slide.
Be similar to the Cougar Rodeo in Riggins.
Managed to catch the template condition of provide an apartment for an assistant city planner, so.
Thank God.
Leaving his mark, leaving his mark everywhere he goes.
Any other questions for Meredith before we go to Morgan and engineering review? Okay, Morgan.
Commissioners, I didn't have too many comments on this as it's a pretty simple subdivision. So the one comment is there's properties to the south needed to dedicate additional sewer easements. Because the sewer main wasn't located in the utility easement. So just working with the sewer district to make sure they don't need additional easements for that infrastructure. And let's see, there's, yeah, notes regarding access as Meredith mentioned. For this property, making sure we limit access onto Davis, so no one in the future comes back ten years from now. An access on Davis because it's a collector roadway. And we want to prevent, we want access on our lower classified roadway. Especially when there's bike lanes coming for that section. And then I just have my standard comment of, once this is finalized, we need two digital CAD files. And prepared in contour, in accordance with the city's digital data submission standards. And that's all wrapped up in the final engineering approval before the plat can be filed or be finalized and approved.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan? All right, so there's a public hearing. So with that, I will open up the public comment. I believe there is at least one person online that wished to comment. Ma'am, now is the time. You're still there?
Yes, I'm here.
If you give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Suzanne Webster and I'm, my address is seven oh one Fairway Drive. So we are right across the street from Mr. Beer's properties. And and I have to compliment him on on having great renters in the barn. Or whatever that one's called. The renters in the one subsequent to the barn south are really packed in those units. And they and they have a lot of stuff they can't get in the garage. And it sits on their deck next to Davis. It sits by their front door. And I'm, my concern is that we'll be looking at all the stuff they can't pack into their garage in this new unit. And so I'm wondering if Mr. Beer's has any plans to. Put some sort of screen up so we don't have to look at all that stuff. Or maybe he can reconfigure the door. I know that would be very expensive for him. But my concern is I just don't want to look at the barbecues, the tricycles, the bicycles, the tires. The, you know, the list goes on and on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay, yep.
So I, so I'm, I'm wondering if there's any, any opportunity for him to. Just screen us from that so we don't have to look at it. And I respect the fact that McCall needs low income housing. Or worker housing, I get it, but I also feel like we deserve some respect as well.
Okay, and he'll have a chance to respond after the public comment. We really don't go back and forth on this, just so you know, but he'll he'll definitely have a chance to respond and. Regarding their comments.
And how would he respond?
He will have a chance once we're done with the public comments to respond back and then we can talk during our deliberation.
Okay.
There's anything else, Suzanne?
No, that's it. That's just my main concern.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? And you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Anybody else? And there is nobody else here in the audience to comment. So with that, we'll go to Vince if you'd like to respond or have anything additional.
One of the things, as we all know, that whole corridor is being torn up. And the ditch moved over to the twelve feet and the bike path going along that side and everything else. And my conversation with Jesse, my son-in-law, who has those other properties, is that we want to do some sort of uniform. Screen down that. Down that, that hole, how many, I don't know how many feet, how many feet is that? Hundred and thirty five, it's like three hundred feet, I think.
Like all the way to the.
Through seven oh six. But but we like to do something uniform all the way along our side as she, because it's just unfortunate when you have. Worker housing, it's stuff, you know, but I'm Suzanne, I hope that. That side of the building that will face you will just be a beautiful building and it really won't have the space to have any junk. So I hope that that, we can lease that and I'm down the road and around and. You know, I, our intention is to really get that whole thing shielded and cleaned up and plant some great bushes and stuff. Along that side, you know, I do want to take pride in what we're doing, so we, I will address that as we do it.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant this time? Commissioners, before we close the public hearing, is there any other questions for staff or anybody else at this time?
Oh, okay, yeah, Meredith, if we did want to add a condition related to no visible storage. Keeping it tidy, what what would that form look like?
You could either put it in the form of CCNRs, but those could be rather costly to draft. Given it's a, like a two lot subdivision, so you could instead form it as like an either or condition. Where they provide staff some kind of CCNR outline specifying outdoor storage prohibition or requirements. Or a study plan for a contiguous fence to screen any visible. Or prior to either submission of a final plat application or receiving any building permit, for example.
Okay, thank you.
Building a fence along there would be an issue as well, wouldn't it?
They're limited to no taller than four feet within twenty feet of any road for sightline purposes. But I I feel as though you could hide things behind a four foot fence. Depending on what the object is, maybe not a horse.
I know it's been changing, but do they have an estimated timeframe of when that pathway will be completed? Is it going to be next year? Or are they hoping for next?
That's ordinary option.
We're anticipating next year, but bid results come in tomorrow, so that's the whole. That's the whole conversation.
Results coming tomorrow.
Then it goes to city council, approve or reject the bids.
Sounds like nightmare. But it would be something that the fence would be done after that's completed.
Chris has asked me to wait.
Wait, Patel, it's all done, yeah.
Don't get in the way.
Yeah. Yeah, don't get in the way. You don't want to fence over as they're digging up some. But.
I'm hoping that as that three hundred feet, then there'd be that excess dirt a little bit. We'll, we're firming it up and then we can put that four foot fence so it, you know, it stays within compliance, but it's also higher and. You know, I mean, it's kind of pushing the envelope a little bit, but Chris and I have kind of talked about that and hopefully that can. You know, still help to, I mean, I think that would really give the tenants some privacy and dignity. Plus also shield that, you know, stuff.
Yeah, because you drive by and look in the windows. So potentially as a thought, well, I guess we're not to deliberation yet, but as a condition, we could do something that. The contiguous fence be completed within one year of completion of the pathway? Something like that.
I would put a condition that attaches to a city project. Know our own timeline.
If I could, I would, maybe if you're going to craft a condition, I would include just screening, a screening plan. Which may or may not involve the fence. It might be landscaping, it might be burning. There may be some storage alternatives. Or the CCNR option. So I think kind of trying to write the condition generally so that it satisfies what you're, without getting too prescriptive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense.
Do either prior to submission of the final plat application or prior to issuance of the building permit for the the property. That fencing or screening plan of a sort should be submitted and approved by staff. So, and hopefully before final plat. And I don't even know that I would prescribe like constructing that fence before the building goes up. Because I don't want to get in the way of the way that needs to do stuff.
It could be a screening plan.
Yeah.
That you guys determine would work, okay.
Well, and the the reality is, is so much of the screening got cut down.
Oh, yeah.
With the, with the, the getting ready for the other stuff and there, and the screening that's really good there is going to have to. I mean, there's one more big beautiful bush that's going to have to go away too, so.
Can that just be part of final engineering approval? Or does it have to be a separate condition instead of the water slide?
I think you you could substitute condition two with.
A screening plan.
Plan rather than a cooler water slide. Plan rather than a cooler water slide.
All right.
Works for me.
Any other questions for staff before we close the public hearing? All right, I make a motion, we close the public hearing for motion a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. On deliberation, I think a lot of it seems pretty cut and drying. Um, I think the idea with this screening plan to be as a condition prior to final plat gives them some flexibility there, but yet still know and kind of take care of both the residents of that of this, across the street as well as the, the renters to have some privacy from the road as well. So I think that kind of takes care of a couple items.
Chairman, if we could at some point um, during your deliberations, go through each of the um, like, what's it called? I don't know, like the criteria of approval for subdivisions since I've never written findings for one of these before for you guys. That would be very helpful to my process serving you.
All right, well, maybe now's a good time if you would go through the conditions for subdivision.
So can, number one, um, and your instructions are the commissions for review and approve, approve conditionally, recommend approval of to the city council or recommend approval to the city council with conditions or disapprove or tables of preliminary plat for additional information. Yada, 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 yada. Um, and you must deny approval of the preliminary plat if you make any of the following findings. So I've retranslated these findings into questions so you can provide yes or no, or maybe so, answers to me. Um, question number one, is the proposed plat consistent with the general and specific plans specified in code and the comprehensive plan?
I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Say yes on that one, yeah.
Okay. Who knows? Uh, question number two, is the design or improvements proposed with the subdivision consistent with general and specific plans? So that's on design and improvements, not just the plaques.
Is it consistent or not consistent?
Is it consistent with general and specific plans?
Yeah.
Do we have designs that we really have for consideration?
Mostly just where the driveway will be and where that, the general house vibe.
Well, as far as those are concerned, I would say yes.
And does the final plat have, is it gonna have more than what we have here? Because this is more like a lot.
Hmm.
You know, record of survey type thing, so, okay, great.
Question number three, is the site physically suitable for the type of development, which is single-family development?
Yeah.
Is the site physically suitable for the proposed density of development?
Being all right, yes.
Is the design likely to cause environmental damage or avoidable injury to wildlife and habitat?
No.
No.
Your last question, because number seven doesn't count in this case, is the design likely to cause serious public health problems?
No.
No.
Continue.
Okay. Well, now that it seems to address all those items, other than the change of item number two for the potential um, screening plan, I think, seems like we're all pretty much on board, so. And that will be.
Okay.
I guess the only thing to add with that is that is gonna be for both properties then. When it's separated, it will be just for, it'll be more than just for the one property, it's gonna be for both. Where the barn dominium is located as well as a new parcel because it's for the subdivision.
Correct.
Not just for one site. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and our intent is to go all the way down.
Right.
I mean, I could be.
We can't have any more of the comment.
All right, I move to recommend approval of subdivision twenty-four oh two to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval with modification of condition two uh, to strike the cooler water slide and replace with a screening plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Hearing none, uh, item is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, with that, we got other, um, we do not have a recommendation for appointment of the zoning commission at this point. On Meredith, do we have any signs?
Oh.
We have no signs. Um, upcoming meeting agenda, December?
December, we will have a record of survey, um, a similar one lot, lot split over on Burn. Um, uh, condominiumization and revisiting of the storage project out on South Sampson Trail. Uh, it's requested to review some more information for that application. And then one, two, three shoreline design reviews um, on various locations about the lake.
Off Eagle Road?
No, it's another one.
Yeah, that's okay.
And I just thought something I was gonna ask, do we have any updates on the toaster house there right there off of Davis? I noticed not much is done on it.
Yeah, it's completed. Uh, it's currently being marketed as a recruitment.
Okay, so.
Tool for new hires of the city.
Okay, so it is done. I was wondering about that, is it done? So it's just a matter of, you get the right person in there.
Forrest didn't wanna put his um, four-person family in there, unfortunately, the one-bedroom.
Okay, well, good, because yeah, people were asking and I, like, the other day was thinking about it.
Yeah, it is, it's officially completed.
Okay.
It's great. The Assistant City Planner's space.
Haven't been kicked out. What happened? Oh, wait.
New planner.
The Assistant City Planner.
Yeah. The new planner needs a new place. So, okay, with that, I think it's complete our agenda, Tony.
I make a motion that we, during the meeting at um, six, six forty-seven, I heard it somewhere.
Second.
Maybe. Motion in several seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You opposed? Then meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
You still have thirteen minutes to vote.
Yes, and if you haven't voted, go vote.
Is it really all today?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
It wasn't.